This meeting is coming to order at this time. And our first, our first duty is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty just for all.
Thank you. We have an oath of office, which is exciting.
Give me your phone number after the meeting, I'll send you your photo.
This is our official photographer.
Yes, that's I think that, yeah, thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner Mizouni.
Here.
Commissioner Morgen.
President.
Commissioner Zinda.
Here.
Here. Next on our agenda is public comment. And the, the public comment is based on things that are not on this agenda. So if you've come for something on our agenda this evening, you'll have your, your time to do that. This is a time for you to visit about something else that's not coming up this evening. We usually keep it to about three minutes, maybe four, just so it doesn't just go on and on. So if you are here this evening and would like to have your say about something that is not on tonight's agenda, please come forward or not. Looks like everyone is here for something this evening. Are there any conflicts of interest of any of us for this evening? Okay. Well, there obviously will be a public hearing and that is next on the agenda. And it is in reference to a permit for a micro business. And these usually start with a staff report, so we'll start with Mr. Stock.
Good evening. This is the first commercial cannabis application we have received since the Council adopted Ordinance 441-217. That ordinance specifically says that a business license may be issued to a business which engages in the growing, the processing, the manufacturing, packaging, handling, transporting, distributing, storing, or the selling of cannabis or cannabis-related products only upon the issuance of a cannabis-related activity use permit by the Planning Commission pursuant to the criteria set forth in the Weed Municipal Code, Section 1832-020. 441 became operative after the issuance of two medical marijuana dispensary licenses. That was the reason those two did not come before you. But from this point forward, every request for a commercial cannabis license of any type is going to come before you with one exception, and that is laboratory for testing the products. Ordinance 441 exempted laboratory because it did not appear to be a use of property that would appear to be a nuisance. There is always the possibility that other cannabis-related businesses could have some potential negative effects on a neighborhood, and that is the reason that the Council wanted a use permit to be issued. A reference to 1832-020 is the same provision of the code that we always refer to in regard to conditional use permits. And the provision is general in nature and does not speak specifically to cannabis or cannabis-related businesses. It says that the Planning Commission shall determine whether or not the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use applied for will, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use, or whether it will be injurious or detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the city. So, you know, it is the same standard that you have traditionally applied on every conditional use application that's come before you. I will tell you that there was one additional provision in 441 that said the city manager or his or her designee may establish forms, requirements, procedures, and other protocols for the application and issuance of such permits, and for the monitoring and enforcement of compliance with any conditions imposed by the Planning Commission. What the applicant is seeking to do is to request to conduct an adult-use A license cannabis micro-business to engage in three out of the four allowable activities under state law. That is cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution. He's seeking to do that in a property that Quonset Hut, which is part of the improvements on his residence. So he's seeking to do commercial application in a residential neighborhood. I recognize that the neighborhood is Zone CM, which is our light manufacturing zone district, but I caution you not to make a decision based on CM. There is another provision in our code that says that the rules and regulations within a zoning district will be applied in the manner in which the neighborhood has developed. And the neighborhood has developed as a single-family, R1-zone district, and therefore what restrictions you would anticipate applying to the applicant should be those, those restrictions you'd apply to any R1-zone within the city. To give you an example of how that works, the property on Woodridge is zoned R4, which means they could have four-story townhouses and apartment buildings. But it developed as single-family residences, so when they came in for their setbacks to rebuild after the fire, they were required to meet the setbacks of the R1-zone district, not the R4-zone districts. So your application should not be, or your action should not be conditioned upon it being a CM-zone district, but rather that it's an R1. There are provisions for allowing some commercial use in a residential neighborhood. They come under our code on Section 1824-040 and, and the regulations related to home occupation. I held a hearing this morning, and I have placed in front of you a letter that I'm prepared to sign, which would allow for the activity with certain conditions. I wasn't able to give that to you in advance of the meeting because of the notice provisions to the neighborhood, so I'm going to spend a little time going over that. But let's first take apart what the applicant is asking for. The adult use means recreational use, which means that he would have the opportunity to grow for the purpose of wholesale sales to licensed establishments that are selling for recreational, not for the medical that is approved with the two that we have here. Though he can sell to the medical, he can sell to both the medical and to the recreational distributors. The three activities that he's asking for is first to grow, limited to 12 plants within the Quonset Hut that he has there. The Quonset Hut is about 760 square feet. He would be limited to no greater than 160 square feet of that Quonset Hut. If you had seen the inside of the Quonset Hut, there is a wall that partitions off 120 square feet. The manufacturing is a Level 1 Type 6, which is, under the state law, only water-based. Basically, they put the plant within, I'm going to, I'm going to call it a washing machine. They add water, they rotate it and mix it, and leaves and stems come off, and they're able to separate product that they then can package. So there's no flammable butane, there's no chemicals involved that could create an environmental health problem. And then he's asking for distribution. That means he can physically carry it from the location to a sales, a licensed sales operator, but he cannot do any sales on the property. We provided notice to the neighbors within 300 feet, both of the administrative hearing this morning and of your public hearing this evening. None of the members of the neighborhood came to the administrative hearing this morning, but it may have been inconvenient because it was at 10:30. So you may have neighbors who might object this evening. No neighbor has indicated an objection to the city at this point. The limitations I got at the hearing that the applicant, under oath, testified that there'd be no employment of help. The only people that would be employed in this process would be members of the residential family. There would be no use of material or mechanical equipment that would not be recognized as part of a normal or hobby use, no commercial equipment. There should be no pedestrian or vehicular traffic, or noise, or electric interference beyond that normal to the zone in which the residence is located. There will be no outside storage, and there would be no inside storage of anything that is excessive, unsightly, or hazardous. There will be no signage on the property related to the home occupation. Only the 20-by-8 room in the Quonset Building could be employed for this purpose, and that there would be no modification to the Quonset at all through the appearance of the structure, although security cameras could be mounted on the outside of the building. If you drove past the property, you would notice that the Quonset Hut had a form of a garage door, a roll-up door. He did testify that that door would come out and a pedestrian, a normal door like you'd see on the side of a house, would be installed, but that's the only modification. He admitted, under oath, that he was aware that the granting of the permit does not exempt him from any state or local regulations, including business license, sales tax, professional restrictions, and that a state license is required. He is not the owner of the house, his father is. His father attended the hearing this morning and is attending the hearing this evening. He is in the process of buying the house from his father. His father, as the owner, said that he has consented to this use of the property. So based on the statements, I agreed that he had met the qualifications for a home occupancy permit under 1824-240, and that if the permit is issued, it will have the following conditions. And I've, I've listed there the majority of them. What I want you to look at is H. To some extent, we're putting the cart before the horse, because we do not have a general cultivation ordinance. We are only in the process of writing one, and there's no way for me to predict what that cultivation ordinance might ultimately say when it gets adopted. You're going to have the opportunity to review it and make recommendations. The Council is going to have the opportunity to amend it when it comes before them. And we're sort of feeling our way through this process of trying to deal with the constitutional amendment that was adopted by the voters, making cannabis legal. Certainly with the licensing of the two dispensaries, we made mistakes. I have no doubt that even if we adopt what we consider to be a great ordinance on, on cultivation, we will probably find that we want to change it a year or two down the road because of something we hadn't thought of, or some problem that arises. Knowing that things, that rules are going to change, I put in H that the permit that he would be given would be valid for only one year, and that he would have to renew or extend it upon the terms that are approved, in this case by the city manager and him, but in your case, under the conditional use permit, I'd recommend that only be one year as well, so that any additional changes that you'd want to make in year two or three, you would have the ability to make. I specifically said under H that the purpose of the provision is to require resubmission of the application with notice to the neighboring property owners as though a new permit was being issued. That's more rigorous than what we've done with other conditional use permits. Other conditional use permits, we've required that they be reviewed, but we didn't require that notice go out to the neighboring property owners. In this case, I think it's appropriate. The purpose of that provision is to require resubmission of the application, give the neighbors an opportunity to complain about concerns and possible nuisances that might have occurred, and would allow the city to establish new and more restrictive limitations on the operations. But I want to make clear to you that although we're asking you to do the hearing this evening, you are not compelled to make a decision this evening. You have the authority. We're leaving the final decision up to you, not up to me. That's why we did the home occupation first and the conditional use review second, because we wanted you to have the last word on this issue. You have the right to approve it, to approve it with conditions, to deny it, or to simply take it under advisement. The, the, last thing that I would tell you is that while we're in the process of doing a growth ordinance, the growth ordinance that I gave to you was the city attorney's first effort at writing, and my recommendation back to him is that there needed to be a specific section for micro-business. And I suggested something along the similar terms to what I'm proposing as terms for Mr. Phillips. In our current situation, state law only allows for recreational purposes the growth of six plants per residence. The city's current growth ordinance allows every person that has a card, a prescription from a doctor, to have six plants. Therefore, if you have a husband and wife within a household, and if both of them had cards, they could each grow six plants. We may be coming back to modify the city's growth ordinance to allow recreational growth, but we may be cutting back to six plants. Today, we do have people out there who have growth permits from us for as many as 12 plants. So when he asked for 12, it seemed like the only thing we were really giving him was the ability to legally sell on a wholesale basis to another. But we told him specifically, no one can come to your place of business to buy, and you cannot have any traffic from potential buyers. The only traffic you can have is if you carry the product in your own vehicle off the site to a licensed dealer. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them, but that would complete the staff presentation.
I have a question. So he's getting the adult-use A license for recreational, but the dispensaries are only selling medical. Who's, who's selling recreational to the public?
The dispensaries in Mount Shasta.
Okay.
They had medical dispensaries prior to January 1, but have switched over to allow them to sell recreational as well.
Okay.
We, we have not.
Yeah, okay, that's what I forgot, is that we're, we're different from Mount Shasta. Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
I'm just going to start down this way with questions to Ron.
Well, we really don't have any questions for Ron, per se, as I do have some questions for the, the potential holder of the permit.
The applicant will be able to testify in a moment.
Do you have anything for staff?
One question. Why isn't cannabis listed on the application? Is there a technical reason for that?
Say that again, Paul, I'm not quite.
Why, why isn't the specific product here listed on the application? So there's a micro-business application for cultivation, but it doesn't specify that it's cannabis. Is there a reason for that, or is it just a?
Yeah, the, the business license ordinance, as it was amended by 441, treats cannabis businesses different than all other businesses. And so it, we're highlighting the fact that this one has to go through that special process. If what he was doing was having a home occupation because they're baking Sally's cookies that they were going to take to Spirit and sell, and the regular cookies, oatmeal raisin, okay, home occupation could be approved without a conditional use permit. If what they were doing was having, one of them that we get all the time is a buyer buying mushrooms. Those are home occupations where we limit the number of vehicles that can come to that house for the purpose of delivering mushrooms for sale. Those are home occupations. We don't require them to go through a conditional use permit process. Those are all done administratively. But cannabis, because it was so new to the city council, and because they were trying to balance the interests of competing parties, and recognize that some growth of marijuana can become a nuisance to a neighbor, they wanted to have more control, more limitations. So they didn't want it to simply be reviewed administratively, they wanted it to be reviewed by the Planning Commission to take into consideration possible adverse effects on other properties.
Monica?
I jumped in.
Do you have a question for Ron?
I have a few, but, um, this is for a commercial. What about if, if Mr. Phillips has one, say, for medical or somebody? Isn't that two separate? Can you grow for medical and that also?
Yeah, if he wanted to use it for his own use.
Do you need another permit for that?
For his own use, for his own use, he can get a permit. That's administratively approved.
That can be in the same group of the plants that are being grown in that area, or is that separated?
Well, he's actually foreclosed that possibility. He's only going to have 12 plants. He can't have a 13th one and claim that it's for his own use.
That's my question, though.
So if, if he uses the product from three of the plants, he's only going to have product to sell from nine. He's, he's limited to 12. He can't have more by claiming that it's for personal use.
And the other question I have, though, I'm looking at the state laws in the cannabis cultivation licensing. Is this, this particular license, it falls under all three or four of those? Those aren't separate, like, micro and distributing, and isn't that, should that be different? I don't know, should those be different licensings?
Shane can, can answer that question, but state law requires that they ask for no more than three.
Under one permit?
Yes. He could have asked for just growth and distribution, and not tried this water method to extract material, simply tried to sell the buds. He can't have more by claiming that it's for personal use.
And the other question I have, though, I'm looking at the state laws in the cannabis cultivation licensing. Is this particular license, it falls under all three or four of those? Those aren't separate, like, micro and distributing, and isn't that, should that be different? I don't know, should those be different licensings?
Shane can answer that question, but state law requires that they ask for no more than three.
Under one permit?
He could have asked for just growth and distribution, and not tried this water method to extract material. Simply tried to sell the buds. He could have used a different method to harvest. I'm not very well-versed in this, because I don't grow and I don't use these products. But I do know that he didn't have to ask for the manufacturing, but he had the right under state law to ask for it.
Now, Todd, I mean, just reading out what I can, 'cause this has kinda been crashed on real quick on the first night, and this is all here, so I'm trying to kinda crash it in and...
I understand.
You're doing well.
You're doing well.
Impression for all five of you at this point.
Yeah. I have a question concerning the applicant information form. It's number, Roman numeral number two. I am curious, it says, "Further, I do or do not agree and grant authorization to state and federal agencies to enter said property for the limited purpose." Neither one of those is marked. I'm just curious. So he, it appears that he is not agreeing, you know, is that just an oversight, or was that on purpose?
Did you take a look at F on my letter?
Yes.
The premise will be available at all times for inspection by the city's building inspector.
Okay, so that supersedes this?
Yes. He didn't check the box, but we checked the box, okay?
It was checked. Very good. Is there going to be venting, some sort of ventilation needed, which would then...
Let's talk about charcoal venting.
Okay, so there should not be any odor coming out? That's in this?
Yeah, he has added a provision that he was going to use a method, I can't remember now, but...
Gotcha.
Charcoal.
Charcoal, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But whether or not that's sufficient will be determined by use, and we may be coming back to add something if the neighbors complain about odor.
So I just, before I allow comments, I just wanna make sure I understand, he has, because of the meeting and today, he has his home occupation permit?
Nope, I haven't signed the letter, and I won't sign the letter unless you approve a conditional use permit, because I'm leaving to you the final word.
Okay, that was my next question. We will be deciding the conditional use permit, and then that is the ball that gets the other one. And by your clever little clause of having it only one year, we can circumvent the fact that the seven-page ordinance that's going to be done, if it doesn't match up completely, we can revisit that after a year.
Yes. In fact, the interesting thing was during the hearing, the applicant said that if you changed it, he would be willing to change sooner than the year. But he was trying to address the question that he's had from many of us, aren't we putting the cart before the horse?
Yes.
Shouldn't we delay a decision here until we actually know what the rules are going to be? And so he's trying to address that, because he knows the length of time he has to get a license out of the state. They apparently have quite a little backlog. Whether he has been successful in addressing your issues in regard to whether it should be dealt with now or later, I can't tell you, that's up to you.
Is there a viable chance that anything that is in the micro-business provision will prohibit him from keeping his or from reapplying, sort of if the land itself just, it won't comply? There's not the space that we require in the ordinance? If there's anything else that might prohibit him from reapplying?
I have the feeling that the cannabis cultivation ordinance is going to limit commercial, large-scale commercial growth operations to the CM and M Zone District. I'm certain that it's going to have a provision saying that the facility must be a certain number of feet from an occupied residential structure. It may also have, there was a provision that we talked about with the council, that was an alternative to that, and that was to have a minimum lot size of a couple of acres. I noticed that in the draft that the city attorney has drafted, that he's put all three of those things in, but he's left blanks for the planning commission, the council, to come up with. What is the appropriate distance from a residence? What is the appropriate minimum size for a lot? What is the appropriate zone districts for the city? I can tell you this, that if it says CM or M, he's not gonna get a commercial growth in that residential neighborhood, because we're gonna apply that provision of the code that says we're gonna treat it based on how it's developed. And if it doesn't say that you can have a commercial growth in an R1 Zone District, and I doubt that it will, they're not gonna have one there. More interesting one is the fact that a nursery wants to go on Main Street. I would hope that a C2 Zone District would not be an appropriate location for any kind of cultivation. So, I mean, we're gonna talk about that ordinance in draft form on your March meeting. I tried to give it to you in advance, not because I wanted you necessarily to take it in consideration in regard to tonight's activity, but I wanted you to know that we were moving towards having an ordinance, and that I wanted you to have enough time to review it so that, like Mark, you wouldn't be coming to the meeting with only having seen it a day or so ahead of time.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Well, if we've asked our questions of staff, the next step in this hearing is the project proponent can get up and explain to us, and we can ask him questions. So tell us who you are and where you live, we can guess, but go for it.
I'm Shane Phillips, 548 Florence. If there's any questions you guys like, I'd like to address them.
So I had questions on the air filtration system. Can I explain how that works and the microns and the efficiency of that? Because I'm sure that's gonna be the number-one thing, you know, in this for the surrounding properties.
Correct. I'm not sure exactly on my microns yet. I'm gonna run it through charcoal filter systems. I'm not really gonna vent outside of the garage, I'm gonna pull fresh air into my room, my grow room. My grow room will be vented into my garage. There will be a little fresh air coming in and out of there. It's been done before, I really haven't had any complaints. I've done it medically for a while now. It has been shut down for quite a long time now, but when it was up and running, I never had any smell complaints or anything like that. It's always been...
So it's kinda like a secondary containment, then?
Yeah, almost triple. I mean, and the way, once we go state with the new wall, it will be pretty much triple. And then when I do go to harvest, and we do freeze every, freeze all the product, and then freeze-dry it, as when I mix it around and put it in the ice, it's a freeze-dried process. If you, Frenchy cannoli, it's a really simple process made with ice, ice extractions. So no volatile chemicals, all organic processes. And the state's regulations are super, super strict when it comes to organics, and your product being tested, and all your compliance, and all your neighbors, and everything being on closer-circuit TV to the state, their regulations are pretty strict, so...
Did you have anything else? That was the...
No, that was my major question.
Paul?
Everything, I pretty much covered with you when I was there. I just noted the stuff around the building that probably needed to be cleaned up, and it was even, I think it was in one of our things that said...
Oh, yeah, totally. I'm just waiting on the approval to put a little more money into it, just to throw the dump runs and put up the exit signs and put in the wiring.
Now, this is something, it's probably a stupid question, but...
No, no, no.
There are no stupid questions.
Especially in this, it's all new, bud.
Considering it's not, it doesn't seem manufacturer-ready yet on the interior...
Correct.
Is there any risk or even concern that, or, you know, do you plan on cleaning up the inside to make it all like, you know, like a clean-room type of environment?
Most definitely. Like I said, I had it there the other day, but with the cold coming in, I had to go get wood, and I just threw it in the garage, it was so cold, I probably should have been. But when we had the fire chief and, excuse me, fire marshal, and we had the building inspector out, it was spotless. I just had to move some stuff around 'cause of the cold and the wood all over.
There are sort of health regulations...
And health inspector still has to come out before I'm state-approved.
Okay.
So, once I, after you guys, I have to do the health, and then I go apply for state, and then after state. And then, the reason I am applying this way is what it is, is a micro-business, is a smaller-scale operation, and in order to fulfill a micro-business, you have to do three of the four things. And three, there's four things, which is cultivation, manufacture, distribution, and retail, which I'm totally leaving retail out, I'm not gonna do any retail product on, or distribution on the property, it'll all be... And the reason, there's probably over 180 retail stores in California that are adult-use and medical. Most of them, you know, do both. I think weed's one of the few that is only medical right now. But most other counties are adult-use. And if you get a commercial use via city and state, then you're allowed to commercially sell to them as well. So that's kinda how the process works, and that's why I'm doing it this way. Otherwise, you have to, if you wanna manufacture, you do one per building. Otherwise, you do it on a small scale, on a micro-business. Otherwise, you, each is a separate permit per, how do you say, per location.
One more question. Now, you don't have to give this information, if it's, maybe it's proprietary, I have no idea, but I know there are only a few areas, a few places around here where you could unload your product. Could you go to another county and sell?
All over the state of California.
Could you cross state lines at all? Is there a process for that?
I don't cross state lines, California only.
Okay. Because I know there's only, I think, there's just Chasta Lake City is the closest one after Mount Chasta, right?
Correct. And then you got Eureka, Humboldt County, and then from there, you have the Bay Area...
Do you have intentions to...
Oh, exactly, that's my more intention, to be the distributing and heading on down the road, and actually buying products, if there's gonna be more local people, I'd love to buy their products and distribute it for them, the local growers, and that's why I wanna get in in the beginning. I'm already in this industry, I work for the Green Heart, I'm trying to get all my contacts and everything in together, and I'm totally willing to work with you guys. If you say not to do something, I'd be willing not to do it. And the cultivation, I'm not that concerned, but I have to fulfill that in order to fulfill it statewide. Otherwise, it's really not even a big concern for me, and, you know, that's the only reason I'm doing that.
You mentioned that you're gonna be getting stuff from other sources.
Correct.
So do you want to do sort of the weed and weed kinda thing, to have it labeled, grown in weed?
We're just gonna have to see where that goes in time. It just kinda, I wanna do a consensus with other people, I don't wanna just swoop on, you know, with the community, so it's kind of a, I don't wanna just say, hey, I'm doing this, I'd rather get a consensus via you guys and my community on where I should go with the name of the product and things like that. That's in time and development, like, it's very, actually a sensitive subject.
Yeah, I only knew a little bit about it, but from what I was told, it had, the soil has to be tested every so often for it to be...
State regulates that. It has to be grown in that city. If it's grown in that city, it can be labeled that. Now, if you obtain it somewhere else, you have to state where it was grown, most definitely. Soil has nothing to do with it, it has to be organic soil. But if I buy a product from a distributor in Redding or a cultivator in Redding, it has to be labeled that they grew it in Redding and I packaged it in. And that's what the track and trace system is, it's gonna be from seed to sale. So from, they'll track it from cultivator to distributor, from distributor to retail, from retail to the person that's gonna buy it from a retail store. And that'll even go on their license, tracked on their license.
Can I interrupt a moment? Home occupation does not include warehousing. So if you buy product from others, package it, store it, it's gonna have to be at a different location.
Okay.
Home occupation is only for activities that occur on-site, not for the ability to go out and buy things and bring them back.
Okay, so then I just have to make my own products and not... That's, that makes sense on the manufacturing.
That was my, yeah, that's what I was thinking. What's the purpose of having it if you're gonna buy it from everybody else and then transport it? That, I mean, I was just confused.
There's money in transporting it as well.
I understand that, but I'm saying, like, you go down to Santa Cruz and wherever, and you buy your product and you bring it back...
What you're buying is their flour, you're not, it's not packaged. They're not, a grower is not allowed to package their own product. A distributor or a manufacturer has to product, uh, package that product.
So...
And have that product tested as well.
I'm confused because...
No, we're clear. We can, you can, you can grow up to 12 plants, and that's, this thing is about 12 plants, and you can truck in more product that you didn't cultivate and distribute, is that...
You can't do that.
No, that's not, Ron, you said that you can't warehouse other product.
I didn't know that I couldn't do that.
Not warehousing.
Yeah.
Had to be distributing.
If you're holding it there...
If it's a packaging operation or a warehousing operation, then it has to go to a commercial zone district.
So a person, he could have that, and what I'm saying is, and then, excuse me, but he can also have another place where he warehouses it.
Yes.
Okay. But it can't be warehoused in the home operation?
Growing.
Okay, I have a question about warehousing. If you're bringing a product in and packaging it and immediately sending it out, is it warehousing? It is. Just because, just the, bringing it into the building constitutes warehousing.
Packaging and the operation of packaging, where you have product, you properly package it, and then you transport it elsewhere, that is a form of manufacturing that is allowable, but only in commercial districts. In fact, right now, we have a pending application for that type of a business, and we told them that they had to go into the CM or the M Zone District because it was manufacturing.
But he technically is in a CM.
Yeah, and...
That gets tricky.
Unfortunately, Shane can't rely upon the fact that the Zone District in which the house is located is CM, because we're gonna apply the regulations of R1. So he can't, he can't do manufacturing other than the product that he grows on-site.
So I wouldn't be able to distribute for other people, then?
Well, you know, there's a state license on transporting, and we do not regulate...
That's what goes under distribution.
And we do not, we do not regulate that.
Okay.
So you, anyone in the community could apply for a license for transporting, but what they're doing is they're going to the place where they're buying the material and taking the material to the sales location. They're not bringing it into the city, and they're not...
They warehouse it instead of me.
They're not warehousing it here.
That's easy enough, I get it now.
But transporting, we don't regulate.
That makes sense. They can warehouse their product, I transport it from their location to retail. Thank you, Ron.
Are we straight?
Yeah. Thank you. He made it very clear, I was confused a little bit.
Complicated. Um, I was going to ask you, didn't you have to do three of those, so you answered that, uh, choose your three. Um, and I was also gonna ask how the state monitored things, but you've blown me away with all of the monitoring that you will be subject to by the state, it sounds like.
Correct.
So, that, that was my question.
That's part of why we wanna get in early, is to start getting a little capital for that. You know, monitoring in the closed security system, and, you know, it's the pixels, it has to be all high-def and everything, so.
Wow.
Yes.
Any other?
I have. The water extraction process. What else is in there besides water and pot?
Ice.
Ice, that's it.
The colder you get the product, the more you're able to pull the THC and CBDs off of the plant matter, correct?
It's done with a temperature gradient instead of any kind of chemical.
Drill or, you know, anything, just to get it spinning in circles, you agitate.
Well, I'm just concerned about the after effluent that's going into the city system.
Totally, yes.
So, it's just water and green stuff.
Organic material.
Okay. All right.
Does a micro-business out of a residential area, that, I, cause I, I think there are different rates for water use, right? Commercial and residential, different water rates? Does this apply to somebody with a business such as his? Does he have to pay different rates?
We've never applied a commercial rate to a home occupation in the past.
Okay.
Um, and some of the home occupations have been, like the cooking that I mentioned, which probably do use more water. We've simply relied on the fact that the more water you use, our rate structure is based on a graduated rate. Never, never gave it another thought, Paul.
That might be part of that ordinance, that cultivation ordinance. Mark, any, any other questions?
Hmm, no, oh, did not, not write this down.
Okay.
Actually, I do, excuse me.
Okay.
Explain your security that you would have for this.
Um, first of all, what it'll be is, when you come up to the Quonset, uh, there'll be two doors. My first door you'll come into, um, you'll come into a security box. There'll be another door, basically in that security box, you won't be able to get in or out of the security box. It'll, and I'll also have to be monitored by ADT, uh, all the way. You know, my cameras are gonna have to be in all my doors. And those will both come in, and then, once we put up the wall, the security door will only open out during business hours. After business hours, it'll always be locked, and same with those. And then, um, the security cameras will be on the grow, on any part of the facility that has any movement activity in it. Um, and then also on the outside, the back and front of the Quonset.
And there's just one-way in and one-way out?
Uh, correct, yep, one-way in, one-way out, yep.
That's what the building inspector is okay with that?
Yeah, and the fire chief on it, yep, one-way in, one-way out, yep, correct. So that if, you know, there's, I needed to get it out fastly, the door opens outward, that.
So, you'll, you'll be able to watch your grow from inside your residence or on your phone?
Via my phone, or, yep, or even you guys would be able to pull it up at any time. I'm sure in time, Martin Nicholas, or at time the state, or, excuse me, the chief of police or something. But I know that the state is able to at any time.
State is?
At any time.
I don't need to worry about us popping in for any surprise.
We'll leave that up to the state.
Alrighty.
Okay, well, thank you very much, this was very informative.
I appreciate your guys' time tonight, I really do.
Well, absolutely. Um, the next people that are invited are, uh, people that are here to speak in support of, um, this project. Okay, and the, now this is open to listen to, uh, opponents of the project. There aren't any of those either, okay. Um, is there any, uh, re, nothing to rebuttal, so, um, the public hearing at this point, unless, Ron, you have anything else to add?
I am gonna modify the letter. If you do approve the conditional use permit, to make clear that it's not allowing warehousing, it's not allowing the bringing of product to the site and repackaging it. It's only for product grown on-site. And I'll, I'll add a paragraph that specifically says that. But once again, I'm trying to be clear with you that it's perfectly advisable for you to take it under advisement. If you, you know, if you're comfortable, uh, you can move forward, but if you're not, you don't have to.
Um, so, y- your letter that will be being signed, that is only tied to the home occupation. So, as we discuss a conditional use permit, will we need to come up with all of the conditions that you did? In, in other words, how do we, how do we flow the, your conditions into our?
If you move to approve it with the same conditions that are in my letter, plus the additional limitation, and approve it for only one year with the requirement that he has to reapply, as though it's a new permit?
Mm-hmm.
It can be that simple a motion. If you wanna add additional conditions because you, you think that there should be additional conditions, let's say you wanted to tell him he had to have two points of entry and exit. You can add any other conditions that you feel are appropriate, but you can simply refer to the letter to say it's the same conditions. I don't think there's any conditions we need to add to it, everything's been covered.
Do, do you see anything over and above what will already be going into the home?
I think at this point, uh, these conditions very clearly, uh, address any concerns that I have personally. Um, as well as, you know, the, the information that was put forth about the state requirements, I mean, that's over and above anything we had discussed, so.
Just so Shane is aware, cause I think he was out of the room when, when Ron said it, that he's gonna add to the letter about the warehousing part, okay.
So, we don't need to mention that at this point because the letter's gonna get changed, so, in our, yeah.
I think we do need to mention that because.
Warehousing?
Do we need to mention the warehousing?
I would.
Okay. Mark, do you want anything else added?
You know, I'm not ready to make a decision for me. Just, just because of this 441-217, 2017, that's still in the council's lap. Isn't this, isn't that what, you said the attorney is, has a draft that hasn't really been presented to the, to the council?
No, uh, 441 was adopted, uh, in November.
So, what is this thing that the, I hear, I've been hearing about going to the attorney, and he's making a draft on certain? That's what I, I mean, it hasn't went in front of.
It's, it's a draft for commercial growth. We have, we have someone that wants to build a twenty thousand square foot greenhouse for indoor growth. And rather than try to set the conditions of approval for a large project on a case-by-case basis, the council has directed the attorney to write an ordinance on commercial growth generally. And that was the document that I sent to you by email.
Right.
And told you we're gonna be talking about next month. And in the process of this hearing, is, it has been pointed out that that does not have an exception for micro-businesses. But we are proposing to the city attorney that he put in a provision that allows for micro-businesses in a residential neighborhood.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is until that, for me, gets in paper and the council's looking at that, that just makes me, just wait for a little bit, for me, that's all.
Sure.
Nothing against not doing it, just.
And that is.
It's still not there yet.
Kind of, that get.
What if it changes as we go along, excuse me, I mean, and the council changes something that affects Shane?
That was one of my concerns as well.
That's what I'm saying, it's gonna affect him, or later on, or, that's all I'm saying, so.
Well, that was the whole cart before the horse thing that we mentioned right at the very beginning. So.
By, by only having it go a year, or, then, things can change. He's, he would be aware, he would have to re, resubmit to a permit after a year. And so, he's taking his chances, you're kind of gambling that it's, your micro-business isn't gonna go south or underground, if it does, you know. So, by, by having it only in effect for a year and having to re, that's kind of a way to kind of sneak under. And then, you might have to pay the piper. You know, so you know this is not a permanent, permanent thing.
But what did this be for, is, what I'm saying is this would be for a month, right?
No, a year.
Until March?
About probably around June.
No, I'm talking about this.
You, you need to think about what the timeline is for an ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, I kinda know what those are.
If you review it in March and you're ready to act on it, it would go to the council in April, and the council in May, and then it would be valid thirty days after second reading, which would be July one.
Right.
So, and, and that's assuming everybody was willing to act on it the first time they see it, and didn't want it to be, go back to the attorney for a change to be added to it. Our sign ordinance took fourteen months. Okay? So, I don't know how long, i- it's not a month for the cannabis ordinance.
Right, wasn't this done like in October of last year? This, this particular, back, finding with the attorney? When I look back in the minutes, that's what I thought it was proposed to him, but I, I don't know, I could be incorrect in that. So, I don't, I don't know, that's just kinda what I looked at today when I was looking at minutes on, online. So, I'm thinking, hmm, that's some time there, but that's just, that's just what I'm wanting, so you're right, it's gonna take longer, okay.
It is gonna take longer.
Um, so at this point, would, uh, there be a motion to, um, to grant a conditional use permit, including all of the conditions that are ready to go into effect? Adding to it the, um, the la, the, the later, um, issue of not, not warehousing? And, um, is there anything else?
The one year.
With the one-year.
The one-year, the one-year, um, granting and needing to re, reapply after a year. That's a long motion.
Oh, I can try.
Well.
Give it a shot, Mark.
We'll, we'll, we'll fill you in if you forget anything.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, applied for by Shane Phillips, for the residential use permit to compile, conduct adult-use cannabis micro-business, with the stipulations that, there is a letter, uh, from Ron Stock that will be adding a no-warehousing stipulation, and that he will reapply within one year. Did I get it?
I think that was it. It has been so moved, do we have a second? We have a second on that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I do, just for the fact that it's, that it's gonna come back, if it comes back, it's on Shane.
That's right, that's right. He's a gambler. Um, motion passes. Uh, thank you and good luck. Um, now, we really change gears.
Hey, stick around, guys, come on.
Oh, it just gets more and more interesting.
Everybody leaves when they're.
Um, every year, this must be, uh, the first of the year, so to speak. Um, and we have a new election of officers, and so would anybody?
Hold on, Donna.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Because of SEQA, we also have to have a motion approving the categorical exemption under SEQA for the approval you just granted.
Yes, we.
Guys, I should've jumped in faster.
Yeah, boy.
I'll move that we exempt it from SEQA.
I'll second.
All those in favor, since it is an existing, the building, the site is existing, nothing is being disturbed.
Chemicals in this water.
Right, nothing, nothing's being disturbed or changed. Um, all in favor of, uh, the SEQA exemption?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? That motion passes also. Thank you.
Starting not very good here.
No. That's okay. You can't, you can't fail.
I had the same concerns, so it's.
You can't fail. Um, do, I forgot, do we start with vice chair or chair? We start?
And, and, the city clerk should do that by calling for, um.
Nominations?
Nominations for chair, um, asking three times. And then, um, if you only have one applicant, ask for a white ballot. If you have more, you vote for the candidates in order that they're nominated. And then that person takes a chair and does the vice chair.
Excellent.
She, she didn't know she was gonna be doing this.
I'm gonna have my worksheet. Nominations are now in order for the office of chair.
I nominate Paul Palphini.
I'll second.
So, Paul Palphini is nominated for the office of chair, are there any further nominations for the office of chair? Do I have to ask for, you said white ballot, that's not on my sheet.
Yeah, ask them if they would, if, if, tell them nominations close, and ask them if they vote for it.
The nominations are now closed. As many are in favor for Paul Palphini for chair, say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and Paul Palphini is elected to the office of chair.
Do we move? Do we?
Okay, Paul, you take over and run the meeting for the vice chair.
Do we move?
You don't have to move.
Oh, yeah, you.
All right. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice chair.
I nominate Monica Zinda.
I second that. Was it me again? Any other nominations for vice chair? And let's vote, all those in favor for Monica Zinda as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That's done. Nominations are now closed. Is that it for that? Okay. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. Are we already on the regular agenda? Item B, review ordinance and mending chapter sixteen four zero concerning fence amortization. Commission to review ordinance update and make necessary recommendations.
When ordinance four forty dash two zero one seven was approved by the city council.
um, modifying our ordinance and listing approved products that a fence could be built out of, the council directed, uh, the city attorney to do the research and come back with an ordinance on amortization. In other words, those fences which have been established and do not comply with the requirements of four forty by being built out of the appropriate materials, how long will those individuals be able to, uh, continue to use a non-conforming fence? The city attorney has done his research and has proposed the draft ordinance that you see in your packet. It basically says that, um, fence may continue to be used for a period of ten years uh, from the date of the adoption of four forty, with two exceptions. The first is that if it require, if it's dangerous, the city may require it to come down, or require it to be repaired. If the fence needs repair, regardless of whether it's dangerous or not, it simply falls into disrepair, the city may require it to be repaired, and if the total cost of repair exceeds twenty-five percent of the cost, the fair market value, of the labor and materials to put up a new fence that meets ordinance, they are required to replace the fence, not to repair it, so it could be shorter than ten years, if not properly maintained. The, uh, there is one item that I'll point to you, and that is, the fence has to be, um, legal at the time it was established to be amortized. So if a permit was issued and the fence was, was erected that did not meet the permit standards required of it, it does not gain amortization status under this ordinance. Ten years is a reasonable number, uh, we talked at staff meeting today. For a residential structure, it's often, um, thirty years or fifty percent of value. So ten years at twenty-five percent of value is, uh, an acceptable standard, apparent, apparently approved by the courts. The city attorney is able to complete his research for the, that purpose and recommends its approval. We bring it to you tonight for you to take a look at it. If this is something that.
You're interested in adopting.
Leave that, it needs to be set for a public hearing at your next council meeting, your next planning commission meeting. But giving you the opportunity to see it tonight gives you the opportunity to send it back for any changes that you want before you actually do a public hearing and recommend its approval to the council.
Does this letter work in conjunction with this ordinance?
Uh, that's coming up later, um, because that was the second direction that we had from the city council, but that's the item under, uh, revocation hearing fence permit.
But that's for next month, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you to set a hearing.
Okay.
Well, this all looks, this all looks good to me, I mean, this looks like common sense stuff to me.
Me as well.
So what I'm not seeing here is any language setting out what type of alternate materials are acceptable and the, and design process, that would, that is something separate?
That, that was. That was the language you put in to the fence ordinance that you sent to the council last fall.
We banned certain things, but we also left room for any unique, fun items that somebody might wanna use.
It could be administratively, or come to us.
So that just doesn't apply to this.
In cases that have come to us.
The council adopted what you sent to them, which set forth what materials would be allowable, um, and what exceptions, you know, people could ask for an exception, come to the planning commission and get an exception. But, um, the, uh, that's applicable to any permit that's issued today for any new fences. But we had a couple of fences that were in the process of being constructed under permits that had issued earlier, which had materials that were not approved in that ordinance, four forty. And so the council said, what do we do about those? And this is the city attorney's response.
So I have a question on the amortization of ten years. So if an existing homeowner has built the fence legally on one of those existing permits that is no longer approved materials, they have ten years, um, if it's in good repair, do they have the option to go back before the planning commission for a design review?
Yes, they can go back before the planning commission and ask for an exception. There is that provision that the planning commission asked to put in, saying, we approve these, if you wanna do something else, you gotta come and ask.
Okay.
So if they wanted to extend it, um, and it was in good condition, they could come and they could ask you.
Okay.
So we're just reviewing this, this, this isn't an actionable item tonight?
No, I only need action if you want me to, to, to change it in some way, but if it's acceptable, we'll put it on for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on it?
No.
Easy.
Move along with it. Okay. All right, item number eight, approval of minutes, everybody look them over? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I don't think we have to.
No?
They're good.
Good to go. Number nine, communications and correspondence. Item A, revocation hearing, fence permit, date set for March twenty-first, twenty eighteen, for Holly Hansard at two eleven Pine Street. Is there anything we need to add on this?
Council directed, as a second item, that those folks who had an existing permit and were in the process of constructing a fence that was not of approved materials, that they be sent a letter and told that they had a limited period of time in which to, to complete the fence. And so they received letters saying that they had ninety days, which was the time period the council thought was reasonable to complete the fence. Every individual who had a permit was able to complete their fence within the ninety days, but one, and that is Holly. The code has a provision that says that a permit can be revoked by the city council if the terms of the permit are violated, or if the council finds that it's in the best interest of the city. But before it can be revoked, section eighteen thirty-two one fifty says, "Before the council considers revocation of any permit, the planning commission shall hold a hearing thereon after giving written notice thereof to the peremptee at least ten days in advance of the hearing. Within five days thereafter the hearing, the commission shall transmit a report of its findings to the council." So what staff is asking you to do is to set a public hearing for your March twenty-first regular meeting on whether or not you will recommend to the council that they revoke the permit that's outstanding. The, uh, I, I don't wish to influence you by telling you, um, what the problems are in regard to that fence. That should be saved for the hearing itself, but we're not asking, we're not seeking, as a staff, to tear the fence down or to modify the fence by rebuilding it in some way. All we're trying to accomplish at this point is to stop construction. If the council wants to move forward to take some further action on the fence, they're gonna have to do that under the nuisance provision of the code, um, and they're going to have to, uh, hold a hearing for that particular purpose. They're being told that they can, if they wish, hold a hearing for that purpose. But they haven't made a decision that they want to move forward on that yet. They just wanna make sure that it stops now, and that there's no further construction.
So it'll be stopped presumably sixty days from now?
Yeah, um, I've told, I've told Holly in the letter to her that if she continues to build, she doesn't earn any amortization, right? So if the council acts, the council can require any new construction to be immediately removed. She has told me, and she's told the building inspector, that she will stop construction. She's not a happy camper, uh, you will hear from her on March twenty-first.
If not this far.
And she basically thinks that I think that we're in Russia, and that this is unconscionable, and that she is gonna circulate a petition to put an item on the ballot for November to let her have her fence, and I said, good luck.
She's right.
It wouldn't be the first time that anybody's misunderstood the intentions of the council or planning commission, so fully prepared for it.
If the council moves forward to want, to remove it, the our recommendation would only be to take off the top course and get it down to the appropriate height. We would think that would be fair, um, not the total removal of the fence. But, uh, again, that's in their ballpark for them to determine if they want, uh, staff to move forward on that issue. All they've directed is that we move forward to stop further construction.
Do we need to take any action?
Yeah, I actually need a motion for you to set, um, a revocation hearing for March twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen on the fence permit for Holly Hansard.
Do we have such?
I have a question though, before we get to that. Um, so, your goal is to stop construction of a substandard fence. But here, you say that her permit is being revoked due to insufficient progress towards completion. It's almost, it's kind of a catch twenty-two here, I'm just trying to understand.
Okay.
If she continues.
She had a permit to build something that is no longer.
Will we see that permit?
You can see all four of them if you'd like. There have been five requests, and four have been granted, um, because she has built it in segments, and a sixth portion of it was built without a permit at all. But the fifth one was not signed off on because the, uh, well, you have to ask the building inspector why he did not sign off on it, but I think it was because of the portion that was built without any building permit. But the, the the point is, she had a permit allowing her to build something which subsequently became illegal. So we said, okay, you have a period of time in which you can exercise your rights and finish building the fence. Failing to do that, we're now saying the time period for you to violate our ordinance is now gone.
Okay, that's what I just was trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was kind of a.
It was, it was that she had the right to do more, um, continue with the building without complying with a subsequent change in the law, but she allowed that time period to lapse.
So Rod, you're saying that, that this property owner had more than one permit to build a fence on the same parcel?
Yeah, she had four permits that she applied for and got approved, a fifth one that she applied for that did not get approved, and a sixth piece of fence that went up that had no permit for it all.
So I'm, I'm, cause when I, we rebuilt our fence on our property after the fire, and we applied for one permit to do the whole fence. I, I didn't know that there was multiple permits, is that like a permit for each section, then?
Yeah.
Is that how that works?
Some of them are on the interior of the property.
If I could get a nickel for every minute I had to spend, or my staff had to spend with Holly, we'd be able to add an additional staff person to our staff.
Be able to build her a really good fence.
Just a point of clarification, is there a house on that property yet?
No.
There's no house on that property.
Okay.
The, the, the second course of fencing that you would like to see down, was any of that permitted?
No.
Okay.
The, uh, the third course, the.
Yeah.
First two courses were permitted, the third course was not, and that funny thing in the middle was what was built without a permit.
I'm sure there'll be pictures. I moved to set a revocation hearing, uh, date for March twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen to, uh, deal with, uh, a fence, uh, at two eleven Pine Street.
Revocation?
Owned by Holly Hans, Hansard, I said revocation.
Oh, you did, okay.
I second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, any commissioner reports this evening?
Mr. Darrow?
No.
No.
Monica?
No, just water stuff, it's not commission stuff.
Mr. Mazzoni?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I have nothing, and staff reports?
I do want you to know that a building permit was, uh, requested for, uh, electric car charging station to be constructed at the, uh, Comfort Inn location, directly across the street from, um, Starbucks. I also want you to know that Tesla approved weed as a location, but at the moment, um, I'm sending Raj, who is the son of the owner of the Comfort Inn after Tesla, to see if they wanna put it in the same location. The Tesla approval was based on the assumption that, uh, that, that the property owner had approached them, rather than a, a local activist. And I've talked to the property owner who's interested, um, so Tesla may go in any one of two locations at this point. But I'm excited. But I'm excited about seeing those additional opportunities, uh, come into our community.
How many Tesla stations are in Mount Shasta?
I believe twelve.
At least. So this isn't, this seems within a, you can throw to all of those. I'm surprised that...
Everybody wants a piece of it apparently.
Wow.
Yeah.
There's one in Dunsmere? Just one, right?
All I've seen is all the ones in Mount Shasta and they're building more.
I think they have something behind Yaks.
Behind Yaks?
The system is to put in these charging stations. Up till now, with their new Model Three, that's different. But up till now, if you bought a Tesla, you could power, powered up at any one of their charging stations free of charge for the rest of the time you own the vehicle. That's changing with the Model Three because of its lower price. But trying to get charging stations, the Tesla plug is different than everybody else's plug. Everybody else, whether it's Ford or Chevy or Honda, uses one plug. Tesla uses a different plug.
It's like Apple.
Every time a charging station opens for the other plug, Tesla tries to have one right next to it with their plug.
Station that's proposed across from Starbucks, that is a...
That is
Regular one?
Non-Tesla.
Non-Tesla.
Everybody else's.
So Tesla wants to keep up with the Joneses?
At least we're moving into a place where you're seeing some charging stations other than Tesla because I was, I wasn't sure how that worked. I'm not knowledgeable in, in electric cars, so...
The state gave a company called Power Point a grant to put a charging station in Wyrica, Weed, Mount Shasta, Dunsmere, and Redding. So, um, Redding got theirs first. It, it appears that Weed is getting second 'cause they haven't applied yet in Wyrica or Dunsmere. I don't know about Mount Shasta. I don't have information from them yet, but there are some exciting things going on with economic development. If you notice, we did hire, um, a firm called Retail Coach and they have approached a number of businesses on our behalf. And they've gotten positive responses from a number. Including one that wants to be in downtown Weed and I'm trying to approach two property owners to determine whether their properties are available. So that I could
For rent or for purchase?
Assist those properties to the company. It's, it's not exciting, it's Dollar Tree. But having what amounts to, uh, you know, a five and dime store from the past, which is what Dollar Tree kind of is, downtown would be a nice addition. And maybe start getting the ball rolling a little bit more. Our organic store is doing extremely well.
It is?
Yeah. He has one thing going for him that you, you don't see. And that is that he has, um, organic vending machines in a couple of counties. And that is really making his business strong.
Interesting.
The lady at the, uh, at the theater, well, when she has events, you can't find a parking spot on Main Street.
I know.
She's really doing some interesting things. And I, I wish her all the well, all, all the possibilities in the world. It's the Cago, the old Cago building, the one that says Mount Shasta Apothecary. That's the one that Dollar Tree is interested in.
I don't, I don't know that building.
Yeah, Cago.
It's the first one this side of Heritage Square.
Of what?
Oh, Heritage Plaza.
Okay, yeah.
Now, Ron, you mentioned that, that Dollar Tree is like an old five and dime store. Like, come on, man.
He doesn't agree.
These are, these are dirtier and cheaper than a five and dime store. I mean, you got products all over the floor. It's just...
Yeah, well, I told you it wasn't a very exciting one, business proposition, but it was at least one. The plans are in for the Holiday Inn Express. And they
Where is that?
Chip off for a review and Holiday Inn Express has finally given in to the mountain chalet look that received, um, architectural review approval by the planning commission eight years ago.
I was gonna say, when was that? Where will that be?
It will be behind Chevron on the cul-de-sac. It'll be the far southwest corner of the cul-de-sac. So as you come around the curve, as you're coming into South Weed, it's gonna be right there.
So this isn't coming before us for architectural review?
It, it came in
It already did.
I know, but eight years ago.
Eight years ago.
That still applies to now?
Yeah, well, the mountain chalet look is what you approved with, uh, pointed roof. Holiday Inn tried last year to get, to get their modern block building. And I told them absolutely not. I'd be tarred and feathered and sent out of town if we approved that. They said, "Well, under the code, you can give us modest changes." I said, "Yeah, that's not modest. You want that, you go all the way back to the planning commission." And, and they, they literally fought for a year but finally gave in.
Did you have something on that, Monica? What did you say?
The, the, the look of it is gonna be very much like the one in Wyrica. That's, that's what was approved by the planning commission eight years ago.
The one in Wyrica, is it the one with all, like, at night that has the lights coming up on the side that you can see off the freeway?
Oh, up on the hill?
That's one on the north end.
Up on the hill.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
The third exit.
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
At the very, at the very north exit, yeah.
And the, the RV park, the five-star RV park that's behind Pilot, they've just asked permission to pull in their construction trailer. So
What do you mean by behind Pilot?
You know, the road to nowhere.
Yeah, the road to nowhere.
The road to nowhere is going to lead somewhere?
Yeah, it's gonna lead to, uh, I think it's a three-hundred-spot RV five-star resort. Which includes cabins, includes, uh, a, a building with a mini mart, includes a building with a laundry, includes bathrooms and showers. I can tell you that every business on that road is excited about the fact that they hear that a construction trailer is finally
Not to mention a stellar view of the mountain.
Yeah.
Stellar.
It's, it's, it just breaks...
That one was approved nine years ago, right?
Well before our time.
I've got somewhat of a staff report, I guess we can go back that far. Not so much a staff report, as much as a question. Now, I love that taco truck that's next to Grocery Outlet, but do they have a permit to operate on that? Piece of land? The taco truck that's on next to Grocery Outlet?
Literally, they actually do. We had to investigate to make sure that they had health department clearance.
Okay.
We had to make sure that they had approval from the property owner.
Okay.
But since it's not a permanent structure, although it, it appears to be sitting there and never, ever moving.
It leaves every night, I think. Every night that it's there.
Yeah, uh, I've had plenty of complaints from Cliff about it being there. He doesn't like the competition.
That's ironic. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's legal.
And delicious.
Uh, can, um, you mentioned the group from Texas. Now, is, when they were hired, I thought they were gonna be like coming here and working with us to, to maybe getting input or whatever to try to beef up Main Street. Are they just recruiting to bring things to Main Street or will we ever see them or...
There's five different elements that they're doing. The first element was to do the ten reports. I don't know, did I give you any copies of those?
I don't know anything about that.
One of the interesting reports looks at what our trade area is. And they say that we actually have a trade area that, in addition to the I-five corridor, includes from Wyrica all the way to Dunsmere. And the second thing that they looked at was how much leakage do we have from our trade area? I'm doing this from memory, but I think they said three hundred and fifty-seven million dollars a year is being spent in Medford and Redding from this trade area.
Exactly.
Then they looked at specific items. What don't we have? The only item where we sold more than, than we had justify is gas. Everything else we're selling less of, including food, than what we should be selling based on the population in the trade area. Then they took from that information, by the way, there there are fifteen hundred jobs in the city. And we did a complete count of everyone that, that is employed. Now, since there are only two that are involved in Forest Service, you need to, Forest Products, you need to know that we're not counting jobs at Roseburg. We're just counting other jobs. If you have fifteen hundred and you have less than three thousand and you know how many kids you have in school, you know how many kids are in COS, it means that people are driving into Weed to work and then driving home.
And going to Medford to shop.
Which, yeah, which helps me get a couple of nonprofits interested in looking at some housing projects here. Because we really need housing. The the third step is to come and try to encourage local people to be entrepreneurs, to think about investing, building businesses, and how to do that. And they've asked me for some dates and I've asked them to come on March twenty-second. I don't know whether or not they're gonna work that out. They have to work out with their staff, but I, I'm trying to get them here the third week of March for that meeting. And I told them I had to know early enough that I could get some advertising out. But we are trying to schedule that. We just haven't got it scheduled yet. And, and the effort is to try to get people downtown. We've talked to the best economic gurus out there. And they tell me that if you have older buildings that are in need of repair, off the beaten path, that our best bet for revitalizing the area is food and entertainment. They said that people will go thirty miles to go to a good steakhouse because it has reputation. They said if you have a bar with some live music and it happens to be the music you like, maybe it's a group you follow that's local or it's the type of music you like, you'll probably go out of your way to it, to go there to listen to that music. They said only when we get that going, are we likely to then see businesses that can feed off that develop. And it will depend on the kind of restaurants you have and the kind of, uh, entertainment. You know, if, if you have country, you're gonna get one type of clientele. If you have alternative rock, indie type, you're gonna get a different age group, okay? And, and so the businesses that would feed off it would depend on what you get. We have offered some, some incentives if we can get a restaurant, a good restaurant, to go downtown. We can offer some incentives in regard to utilities. We can offer some incentives in regard to sales tax. The, the hurdle is many of them tell us that they're frightened because commercial kitchen costs like about two hundred thousand dollars to put it in.
Yeah, but you can get around that.
A steep, a steep run. I do have I do have commitments from two new restaurants, but both of them are gonna be in South Weed. But one will be twenty-four hour sit-down.
Can you divulge which?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, if they're gonna be, if they're gonna try to do independent. This is not on the Silva site. I still haven't seen anything being proposed on the Silva site. This is a different site. But, uh, I, uh, one is, is fast food and the other one is, um, sit-down twenty-four hour.
Just don't say Arby's, 'cause I was just joking with somebody today about an Arby's in South Weed. Please don't say Arby's.
Wendy's has an interest. Carl's Jr. has an interest. Logan's told me absolutely not. Texas Roadhouse said absolutely not.
I don't care about South Weed.
Reasons?
I haven't gotten a response from Chili's or Applebee's yet. I have two non-food that wanna be here. One wants to build a building, well, they actually are gonna have a smaller building than Grocery Outlet, but the total square footage of sales space will be greater than Grocery Outlet because of outdoor storage, outdoor sales. And the other one wants a, um, acre and a half. So they're looking at a pretty good-sized store too.
Ron?
But, you know, from the time that I get them interested to the time that they get everything in line, they have land under contract and they're ready to present something, it's, it takes a year.
Ron, um, my husband and I talk all the time about the leakage to Medford. Does, does this company, did they have any idea of could we do, um, a campaign almost to try to get people to realize, you know, for all their dollars they spend up in Medford, they're they're robbing, you know, our community of certain things? Has there ever been like a public, what would that be, a public service kind of a, uh, a campaign to try to get people to think twice about taking their dollars so far away from their own community?
Many cities have tried a buy local campaign. To some extent, the sales tax difference overrides a lot. overrides a lot of that. One of the things that, that they are trying to do is they're trying to say if, if we can get a better mix of products on the south end of the county, may not necessarily be a store in Weed, but on the south end of the county, we could interrupt some of that. If you absolutely positively have to have a widget and you can't buy a widget locally, but you can buy it in Medford or Reading, you're gonna go to Medford or Reading to buy the widget and while you're there, you're gonna fill that car up with all these things.
It's worth noting that for a lot of people, going shopping in Medford or Reading, and I've, I've been there myself. It, it's a day out, you know? It's a day out of town. Uh, it's something to do. I mean, you're accomplishing something, you're, you're shopping for your goods and stuff, but it's an opportunity to get out of town for a little bit. You go have some fun, you go to a movie, go shopping, so it's not, I think most people are aware of what they're doing, you know? I think they're aware that they're taking dollars away from the local economy and they just, uh-
Those buy local programs have had varying success. Some have been successful, some not so successful.
Well, personally, I, you know, I go to Reading a lot. I did a lot of my food shopping in Reading because they had the prices and the variety. But now with Grocery Outlet, I've probably cut, I've cut that down considerably and buy most of my food here in town. Because I wanna buy local. I buy my, my gas here in town if I can. So it does work. But you gotta have the product. And, you know, we've got fast food, gas and hotels in South Weed. That's, you know, and Grocery Outlet.
Grocery Outlet is doing well.
Yeah.
A place like Grocery Outlet, they rotate their, you know, their, their stock and their inventory and it, it kinda gives everybody a little bit of a surprise, you know, when you go in there and you find something you didn't see before. Cause I get the, the little ice pop, Mexican ice popsicle things and when they don't have them, I'm bummed out, so.
Call it the poor man's Trader Joe's.
Can we have on our agenda at some point, a report or an in-service or whatever to see where the VP RO is at this point?
Probably.
May I request that?
What we did was, uh, last summer, we did inspection of all the residential properties.
Residential?
Required them to do improvements to bring them to code.
Oh, the residential portions of?
Yeah. There is a very exciting proposal for, uh, Mark Juarez's properties. I don't know what, I don't know whether it'll come to fruition or not, but he's working with the right people this time for a project. And actually has support a COS for the project at this point. So we'll have to see where he goes with that. He's trying to convert to student housing. And actually has, a partner company from Vancouver that actually knows what it's doing. Yeah, surprise the heck out of me.
I bet.
But maybe this time he's not all talk. Don't take it to the bank yet.
Anybody else have anything?
Well, I still wanna hear about the commercial part of the, cause I'm just, we're just seeing year after year the same buildings. I hope we're at least getting money out of them with their registration.
We're gonna have a couple of very interesting announcements this fall. Things that you haven't even imagined yet.
Fantastic.
This fall? We have to wait that long?
Are you gonna do what I do all the time and never?
No, I'm waiting, this, can, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move this meeting be adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Cause I would always forget.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would always forget.